Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to this, the first meeting of the month of November for the Lincoln City Council. I'd like you to all join me as we stand and do a present allegiance to the flag, and that'll be followed by a brief moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undegrad, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with L.B. 898, a copy of the open meetings law is posted at the back of the chamber. Each year, the Lincoln City Council passes a number of improvement district ordinances. Today, we're here to equalize the assessments of several such districts: the Downtown Core Management, the Downtown Maintenance, the Downtown Management, the West Hay Market Downtown Maintenance Business Improvement Districts. These districts encompass the management activities performed through and contracted by the Downtown Lincoln Association. Once these projects have been completed, the cost is paid by the city through its special assessment revolving fund. It is then necessary for the city to recoup its costs from the benefited property owners and reimburse the revolving fund. These costs or assessments are computed by the Urban Development Department and presented to the city for its review when sitting as a Board of Equalization, which we will do now. The clerk will read descriptions of each district into the record, and then representative of the Urban Development District will come forward and make a brief statement about the district. After that, everyone wishing to make a statement must come, may come forward. Please state your name, address, before making any comments.
I nominate Benny Schob as Chair of the Board of Equalization.
Second.
Do I conduct the business? There's been a nomination and second. Is any discussion? Would you call the roll, please?
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes. I'm staying.
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Could I have voted no, then?
No, you should always vote yes for yourself.
All right, I'll read the districts into the record. We have the Downtown Core Management Business Improvement District, generally bounded by N Street on the south and Pinnacle Arena Drive on the west, thence north and northeasterly along Pinnacle Arena Drive to Eighth Street, thence south along Eighth Street to S Street, thence east along South S Street to Ninth Street, thence south along Ninth Street to Q Street, thence east along a Q Street to Tenth Street, north along Tenth Street to a point approximately mid-block between Q and R Street, east along said mid-block point to Fourteenth Street, south along Fourteenth Street to Q Street, east along Q Street to Centennial Mall, south along Centennial Mall to M Street, west along M Street to Thirteenth Street, south along Thirteenth Street to L Street, west along L Street to Twelfth Street, along Twelfth Street to M Street, west along M Street to Ninth Street, north along Ninth Street to N Street, and west along N Street to Pinnacle Arena Drive. Downtown Maintenance District, extending from Seventh Street on the west to Seventeenth Street on the east, and from R Street on the north to M Street on the south, including the properties abutting on the west side of Seventh Street from N to R, the east side of Seventeenth Street from Q to M, the north side of R Street from Seventh to Tenth, the south side of M Street from Eighth to Seventeenth, both sides of Thirteenth Street from M Street to Lincoln Mall, and all of Cornhusker Square. Downtown Management is generally bounded by N Street on the south and Pinnacle Arena Drive on the west, north and northeasterly along Pinnacle Arena Drive to Ninth Street, southeasterly along Ninth Street and I-180 to a point approximately mid-block between R Street and Q Street, east along said midpoint to Fourteenth Street, south along Fourteenth to Q Street, east along Q to Seventeenth, south along Seventeenth to K Street, west along K Street to Fourteenth, south along Fourteenth Street to a point approximately mid-block between Lincoln Mall and H Street, west along said mid-block point to Tenth Street, south along Tenth Street to K Street, west along K Street to Eighth Street, north along Eighth Street to N, and west along N Street to Pinnacle Arena Drive. The West Hay Market Downtown Maintenance District is generally located along the west line of Outlot C, West Hay Market Edition, from approximately K Street on the south, north to N Street, and continuing north along the center line of Pinnacle Arena Drive to approximately Ninth and Tenth Streets, thence south to R Street, west to Seventh, south to O, east to Eighth, south to the alley south of N Street, west to the east line of Outlot C, West Hay Market Edition.
Good afternoon. I'm Ron Kane with the Urban Development Department, and I am the staff person that prepared the proposed assessments before you this afternoon.
Thank you.
And these are based on expenditures between September 1 of 2017 through August 31st of 2018. And I'm here today to answer any questions you may have regarding how I prepared these assessments.
Questions from the council? Councilman Lamb.
Sure, thank you. I don't really have questions. I just have a comment. Like, when she's reading all that, I think it would be really great if you were just drawing the map as she's describing it. So that we all understood.
An animation that can, yeah.
Right, on it, like, on an overlay or something.
A little Thomas Shuttle driving the outline?
Right.
I have different times brought maps with me, but it's never came up, so I didn't bring any maps with me.
I just thought drawing would be a nice exercise.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilman Eskridge.
Yeah, just a question. An area that's not in, in the current district is the new Telegraph District, right?
I don't believe it is.
Yeah.
That's, because by the time you get to Seventeenth, Teletr-.
Right.
That's beyond Seventeenth Street, so.
So, and, and we did this recently with the West Hay Market when that came in, so, so it has to be, it would have to be a separate area. Is that right? Is that how that would work?
It would, yeah, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions from the council? This is a public testimony portion, so is there anyone in the chamber that would like, thank you, just again, see anyone in the chamber that would like to speak to this Equalization Board hearing? Long pause, and seeing no one coming forth? Do we need a motion?
Yes, if someone would move the assessments.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Eskridge and a second by Councilman Christensen. Discussion of the motion? Seeing none, would you call the roll, please?
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Need a motion to adjourn, sign, and die.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Motion by Councilman Eskridge and a second by Councilman Raybold. Would you call the roll, please?
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
We are adjourned, sign, and die. And now we will proceed with the regular scheduled meeting of the Lincoln City Council, and which means I get to read again. In accordance with L.B. 898, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber. The order of the business of the Lincoln City Council is as follows: The clerk will call items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an agenda item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, then those, those opposed. The applicant may then make a short rebuttal. Each speaker may begin by stating their name, address, and whether they're speaking in favor of or in opposition to an item. Testimony is limited to five minutes. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last meeting of the month immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date, nor planned for a future agenda. Madam Clerk, would you, are you prepared for us to start?
We would ask those of the general public coming forward to testify to please clearly state your name, spell your name, give your address, and sign in on the sign-in sheet laying on the podium. Testifiers may use either microphone, and there is a sign-in sheet by each microphone. We ask those individuals from city staff who are testifying to please state your name, title, and the department you work for. Once you have testified and council does not have any questions of you, you may return to your seat. Our first item of business is our public hearing consent agenda, items one through three.
Is there some, anyone here to, I want to go back and read the, the Veterans Day, Thanksgiving Day thing.
Oh, sure. Due to Veterans Day and Thanksgiving holiday, the city council will not meet on Monday, November 12th, or Monday, November 26th.
Thank you. Sorry to be.
Does anyone wish to come forward on the consent agenda? If not, we can vote on these items.
Anyone coming forward, yes.
One A was introduced by Gaylor Baird. So moved. Second?
Motion by Councilman Gaylor Baird and second by Councilman Eskridge. Discussion of one A? Would you call the roll, please?
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Then items one B and two A through H, and item three were introduced by Raybold? So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilwoman Raybold and a second by Councilman Eskridge. Discussion? Would you call the roll, please?
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next then are public hearing liquor resolutions. Those giving testimony are asked to come forward, raise their right hand for the clerk to administer the oath. After the oath, witnesses shall state their names and addresses. I'll call items four A and B together. They're the application of Braska Bar for a Class I liquor license at 501 West A Street, Suites 103 and 104, and the related manager application of Melissa Kessler.
Madam Clerk, there's been, it brought my attention about miscellaneous resolutions, number three?
Yes, I included that in the last motion.
Okay, you did.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk, for helping me get back on track. And hello and welcome.
Hi.
Your, yeah, your turn.
Do I put the bar address for the address, or?
Whatever you feel comfortable with.
Okay.
And the clerk will ask you some questions, and then I will ask you some questions, and we'll all have fun.
Would you raise your right hands?
That's her question.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you rarely believe it to be?
Yes.
Thank you. Just state your names and addresses.
Melissa Kessler, 6840 Colfax Avenue.
Okay.
Lisa Winchester, I put 501 West A Street.
Thank you. Ladies, thanks for coming forward. Tell us a little bit about your application.
Well, we purchased a bar, and we are co-owners, and we would like to get a liquor license so that we may open, and.
Is this an existing establishment, or is something new, or you're converting? Tell us a little bit.
It was, it was an established bar, but they closed in the beginning of June, I believe. So it is closed right now.
It was 501.
Yes.
501 Bar and Grill.
Bar and Grill, yeah.
Other, would you like to say anything before I ask if we have any other questions?
Nope. If you have questions, I'm, I'm open.
Councilman Christensen?
Are you going to have a menu that you can order from, food?
Yes, and daily specials, and we like to get a dancing permit and all that kind of stuff, and have rock music or stuff like that. We do want to do some charitable, give back to the community stuff, too, though. Fun stuff.
Other questions? Councilman Camp?
Yes, sir. Welcome and appreciate your coming. I had looked through the materials you presented in your application, and in one spot, it listed you as 50/50 owners, and in another spot, it listed as 70/30.
70/30, yeah.
70/30.
We had had to redo a lot of the applications.
So 70/30 is the correct number?
70/30.
The 50/50 should be replaced with 70/30, is that what you're suggesting?
Yes.
Okay, I probably want to correct that before it goes upstairs to the state. Okay, I think that was it, then. Thank you.
Other questions from the council? Ladies, thank you very much. You can sit down now.
Thank you.
Is anyone in the audience that would like to testify on this agenda item, this application? Seeing no one, Teresa, may we go to the next item?
Yes, I'll call four C and D together. They're the application of Nate's Place LLC, doing business as Pal Burger for a Class I liquor license at 2701 North 48th Street, Suite 4, and the related manager application of Nathan Ushio.
Hello. Good afternoon. Hello, thank you for coming forward. If you would, the clerk would like to, yeah.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you rarely believe it to be?
Yes.
Thank you.
My name is Nathan Ushio, N-A-T-H-A-N-U-S-H-I-O. Address is 2701 North 48th Street, Suite Number 4, Lincoln, Nebraska, 685, 68504.
Thank you, Nate, for coming forward. Tell us a little bit about your application.
I'm just applying for liquor license at the said address. Just looking to do pretty much just beer only to start, start out with, and then we'll see how it goes from there.
Question, Councilman Lamb?
Thank you. Mr. Ushio, I, I now I know, remember where I knew you from. So, because you're up in my neck of the woods, up there at Nate's Place. So appreciate that. I did want to ask you if you guys still have that wonderful old soda fountain bar, and if this is, that's going to play, this will play into that any at all?
Yeah, so we don't have the soda fountain anymore, but the, the bar is still there.
Right.
But the equipment back there was removed, so.
So this isn't going to be used for, like, special events or something? This is something every day that folks will be able to order?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions from the council? We should do lunch there. Is anyone else have questions from the council? Nate, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify on this application and agenda item? Seeing no one, Teresa, we have one more item?
Yes, our last one is four E, application of Seven Diamonds LLC, doing business at Talon Room to expand its Class CK liquor license for an additional indoor area measuring approximately 175 feet by 43 feet at 230 North 12th Street, Suite 1. They are currently on the first floor, and they are expanding now to the second floor.
Good afternoon and welcome.
Thank you.
Would you raise your right hand?
Yes.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you rarely believe it to be?
Yes.
Thank you.
My name's Derek Hayden, D-E-R-R-I-C-K-H-E-Y-D-O-N. I'm appearing on behalf of the owners. They're away on a, at a wedding expo this weekend. And their location's at 230 North 12th Street, Lincoln, Nebraska, 68508. They've been running for about a year and a half now, a wedding venue in the basement. You'd probably know it as the old Spaghetti Works building. Recently, the upstairs directly above them had become available, and they had acquired it, and now they want to host wedding events upstairs as well as doing, as well as doing food caterings for that location as well. So be welcome to answer any questions about the location.
Questions, Councilman Camp?
Thank you, Mr. Hayden. So you're saying they'll do both the lower level or basement and the first floor?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
The, the first floor was divided in half with a breakfast place, is it going to bring it all back together, or are you just taking one half?
No. So, the, the way you might remember the old building, yeah, they divided that, and it's now a marine recruiting business, and they're still going to have it the way you might remember Flapjacks or?
Yes.
Forget what the old, the other one was.
Yeah. I do remember the other one, but I can't remember the name either. Thank you. Other questions from the council? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify on this agenda item? Seeing, yes?
Mr. Chair, I'd move approval of items four A through four E.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Camp and a second by Councilman Christensen. Discussion of the motion to approve? Hearing none, I'll ask Teresa to call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next then are public hearing resolutions. Item 5A, assessing liens for the cost of asbestos removal and demolition of the building, generally located at 4842 Adams Street.
Thank you. Hi. Welcome.
Hello, I'm Sean Stewart. I'm Chief Housing Inspector with City of Lincoln.
Hey, Mr. Stewart, good to meet you again. Tell us about the resolution 5A.
It's assessment of cost to do asbestos removal and demolition cost for the property at the address 4842 Adams Street.
And this is new for me. Is this pretty routine? Does this happen a lot? How long has the process been underway?
It, it, it doesn't happen quite often. I mean, we usually try to resolve the issues through the owner, taking care of the, whatever the issues are, get them to repair the property or demolition themselves.
Are there other questions from the council? Councilman Eskridge?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Stewart. So, as I read through this, is $22,000 plus cost?
Correct.
Okay. And that's a lien that will go with the property?
Yes, against the, the property.
Okay. And any other costs associated with that? This property was demolished, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
No, that's the total cost from our department for the cost of demolition and asbestos removal.
You wouldn't happen to know the value of the property? Probably not much more than that.
Not, not off the top of my head, I don't.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions from the council? Mr. Stewart, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to testify on this agenda item? Seeing no one, let's move to 5B.
All right. Item 5B is assessing public health nuisance abatement costs associated with the clearing of public nuisances by the Health Department on various properties.
Good afternoon, Chair Schob and council members.
Good afternoon.
Shavana Lauster, Health Director of the Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department. And each year, the department is required to bring the costs incurred for abating public health nuisances on private property to the city council. Abatements are conducted to clear properties of conditions which can contribute to public health problems, including rodent or insect breeding or injury. Such, such conditions are a violation of LMC 8.26 nuisances, and property owners and/or tenants with such conditions are given written notice to eliminate the nuisance. After proper notice and due time, if such conditions are not eliminated, the Health Department contracts for the abatement and the cleanup. All associated costs are assessed against the property owner in accordance with LMC 8.26, and the costs of the assessments before you are for the timeframe of September 1, 2017, to August 31, 2018. Assessments do not apply to real estate cleared of a proper, excuse me, of a public nuisance where costs have been already paid in full, so we've already removed those from the list. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Councilman Eskridge?
Yes, Ms. Lauster, thanks for being here. Had, had a question, reviewed these to see, you know, where they were and, and the amounts, and, and one stood out for me. The 1456 North 15th Street that seemed to be two or three times higher than the next one. So could you explain that one?
Yes, we can. That property actually involved the removal of a drum of unknown hazardous materials, and so that material had leaked and contaminated the soil. And so those costs included the mobilization of our contract to, to the site, there's, there's staff time, the materials, the drum, and the additional overpack of the drum, the gloves, the laboratory testing to identify exactly what the hazardous material was. um, the laboratory testing to identify exactly what the hazardous material was that had leaked. And so, um, and then it covered those costs for disposal of, of that properly.
So for, for someone who would have that kind of situation in, in their home or, uh, business even, what, what would you advise them to do?
I would advise them to go to our new hastogo.com website, um, for our Lincoln waste, uh, at least Lincoln Hazardous Waste Center out on North Forty-Eighth Street. Uh, we have a list of all of those potential hazardous substances that may be in your garage, in your shed, um, in your home that you're not thinking about and looking on there and seeing if you have any of those materials and to bring, make an appointment and bring them to that, to that site so we can dispose of it properly.
Okay, so and by doing that in advance, obviously they're going to save themselves.
Absolutely.
This kind of assessment.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Estrich, any other questions from the council? Ms. Laustert, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is anyone in the chamber that would like to speak on this agenda item?
I'm Darrell Skabinski, like this, uh, my address, like this is sixteen-nine thirty-five Cleveland, here in Lincoln, like this, anyway. On, when this came to happen, I was helping a friend clean up on the South Dakota border and they didn't get a hold of me until Wednesday, they had already taken care of the problem on Tuesday. And it was already done before I even knew there was a problem. Anyway, I stopped by the property because I have a neighbor that mows the grass and takes care of it and I stop by every few weeks and check, make sure everything, nobody broke into the house or anything like that. And the barrel that was behind the garage, I had upside down and I didn't think there should have been an issue with it, but, uh, I have a lovely neighbor, I think you all know him very well, Mike, like this, and he, um, when I was emptying the garage out and I decided to move it out of town and everything and clear the property like this, so there was no chance anybody could put anything anywhere, I found eight more gallon jugs of, uh, oil in, in the garage. And, and he was buying, I, I said something to him, I says, well, uh, I don't know who's donating things to me like this while, uh, you know, disposing things on my property and, and, uh, and he says, well, it'd be better to donate than steal from you, and, and then he just walked off. And, uh, so at some point, he obviously was, uh, flipped the barrel over and he was discarding his waste and behind my garage like this. And so I didn't even know what was going on because I rarely ever walked back behind there, back to it. And, uh, I, you know, the barrel was upside down, I put it that, you know, and, and I didn't know that anything was even in the barrel, so, um, I, I kind of drew the loss of a perfectly good plastic barrel, but, but, uh, as far as them removing soil like this, they, I, I didn't see any soil removed or anything like that, that the barrel was gone like this, so I don't know, but, uh, I, I was just, you know, I realized I have a responsibility, it's my property, I don't know what's going on there, but, uh, I, it, the, the cost is just, because then they, it just seemed like turn around and, 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 uh, with digging up and shutting off the water on the property just weeks later and stuff, all the costs that's been involved like this is just a, a little overwhelming, uh, you know. I was hoping for somewhat of lowering of, of the bill like this because it's just, it's a bit much. So I got.
Questions from the council? I'm, I'm sorry, would you, I didn't catch your name, you can.
Darrell Skabinski.
Thank you Darrell, and that was sixteen-nine thirty-five Cleveland, thank you. Questions from the council?
This is the property on North.
No, yeah, this is the property on, on fourteen fifty-six North Fifteenth Street that you was just talking about earlier before it came up.
Okay, so the one that sort of stood out there.
Yeah, I was, I'm sorry, I was remiss, I was.
No, that's okay.
Other questions from the council?
Staff question.
Ms. Laustert, would you yield for a question?
Okay, so, um, Mr. Skabinski says he has.
Thank you.
Only found out about it after the fact. Could you describe for us the notification process?
Sure, yes, so, uh, we notify, um, our staff made three visits, um, out to the property. Um, and then we noticed, sent a certified letter that was, uh, hand delivered in person on May twenty-fifth, two thousand eighteen. And so after we, uh, send the letter, they have five days to comply with either cleanup of the property. And so when that doesn't happen, then we go back out, um, we take before and after picture, before and after pictures of the cleanup, we have our contractor come out and abate the property.
Councilwoman Raybold, and then Councilwoman Camp.
Did it go to his Cleveland home address?
It did.
Okay.
It, well, it went to, I'm sorry, it went to the two-four-seven-seven County Road A, uh, Valparaiso, I think is how you pronounce it, I'm not sure, Nebraska. Um, and so we send it to the address that is on file with the Register of Deeds.
That was back in May?
May, uh, that was, the first letter, uh, was delivered, notice served in person via certified mail on May twenty-fifth. We also sent a subsequent letter to that address, the two-four-seven-seven, on August seventh, two thousand eighteen.
Does it show who signed for the letter on that?
Uh, let's see. Name of hauler. It does not show on this, look through all of my documentation here.
But then it was actually cleaned up on June fourth?
Yes.
And what is the biggest component of the abatement cost?
Let's see. It's like the largest is from Environmental Solutions, um, and that was for, um, the removal of the, the drum and disposal, um, of that hazardous waste drum. That cost was one thousand, with tax and everything, was one thousand six hundred forty-seven dollars.
Councilwoman Raybold, do you have additional questions?
No, thank you.
Councilman Camp had his hand up.
Yes, thank you very much. Sixteen forty-seven to remove the drum, so obviously there, I assume there had to be some other attendant cost?
Yes, so, let's see, the, uh, project manager with pickup was one hundred and fifteen dollars. Uh, there were two forty-hour technicians, um, at fifty-five dollars apiece, so that equaled six hundred and five dollars. Um, there was a service box truck, emergency response, that was four hundred and forty dollars. The gloves were fourteen dollars. The drum overpack for ninety-five gallons was two hundred and fifty-eight dollars each, and there was one of those. There was a steel drum, um, a fifty-five gallon drum that was moved, that was sixty-five dollars. And then there's a charge for pads universal, all in water. There were three of the, or excuse me, uh, one of those at fifty dollars. I'll take that back, three of those, a hundred and fifty dollars was the total for that, to give you the total of sixteen forty-seven. And that was the bill that we received from Environmental Solutions for the largest cost.
And that bill's been paid?
That, uh, has not been paid, that is part of the, um, abatement costs that we included in the two thousand four hundred eighty-two dollars and sixty-one cents. So the number of staff visits, there were three, we charged twenty-seven dollars a visit, so that was eighty-one dollars. Supervisor time and staff inspections is twelve dollars and sixty-five cent. Um, administrative costs, clearance were ninety-six dollars and fifteen cents. For our hazmat charges, um, they were six hundred and forty-five dollars and eighty-one cents. And then the garbage hauler, which was ESI, Environmental Solutions, that was the largest cost at sixteen forty-seven.
When you went through the breakdown of those costs, about two-thirds of the way through, you talked about, I believe it was two smaller drums or something, they seem to have a.
Um, they charged for one drum overpack, a ninety-five gallon, uh, there was one each at two hundred and fifty-eight dollars. And then they charged for a drum steel, a fifty-five gallon, for, at sixty-five dollars.
And on that, where you described the drug or the drum overpack, what's that mean?
Let's see, it says the fifty-five gallon drum with solid materials contaminated with petroleum, vehicle fluids and fuels. And the other gallon was a gallon drum with petroleum products, vehicle fuel, fluid, excuse me, and water. So they were filled with, um, chemicals, with those items, and so they had to be removed.
Was there any ground testing?
Uh, let's see. We, I don't have that in my documentation, I can go back and look and find. Um, we did have it, complaints that it was, um, had been filled up with runoff from the roof of the metal garage and so was spilling oily water over into the soil. This was from another property owner who had complained about the barrel that had been left back there for some time and it was filling up.
Councilwoman Lamb?
Yes, um, can you just explain, um, for the property owner what the process is in the event that the assessment is approved by this body?
Uh, the process would then be that a lien would go against the property until those fees were paid in full. Um, last year, we had about twenty-eight people on the list, this year we're down to fourteen. Most, most of the ones we had on the list for this year have, half of them have paid their fees and so they were removed from the items that you have in front of you today.
And the property owner's able to pay portions on that? Or does it have to all be paid at once?
That I'm not sure on, I'd have to find out.
Thank you.
And I do have the certified letter that was sent on, uh, see the scan that was received, it just, I just have the ticket that shows that it was delivered, um, to Mr. Skabinski at two-four-seven-seven County Road A. And this was May twenty-fifth, the certified copy was sent, you know.
Other questions from the council? Yes, Councilwoman Gaylord Baird.
Well, just, I want to make sure I understand, so your records show that this notification was received by, um.
Property owner.
The property owner, May twenty-fifth. A record, a written record?
Yes ma'am, and then we have another letter that we sent out August seventh, um, to him as well.
It wasn't received by someone else for him?
Not that we're aware of.
Was it just regular postage or was that a certified mail?
Yes, we have postage, we have, let's see, that certified letter is scanned, um, and then we receive the note back. We received a note back saying that it was received, um, on certi- on, on mail on five twenty-five, twenty eighteen.
Thank you.
Councilman Camp?
Just if I made a follow-up on that, so on the, the response you got that it was served, does that, uh, show the signature and so forth on it?
I don't have it with me today, but I will follow up and check because normally we do get those back. That's how we know it's been.
Both letters in the May and the August one were sent certified mail, return receipt requested.
Let's see, um. I'll follow up with that, please note that your signature on the waiver and payment agreement form must be made in front of a notary public. And so the notary public that we have. Then one from the notary public we have is just from the hauler, um, who received it, but I'll follow up as well and get that to you.
I was going to say, is it possible to have the, the amount come forward?
I, I think I'm going to go with Councilwoman Raybold first, then we'll come back to that.
Sure.
One more question, is it customary for property owners to set up a payment plan for the abatement work that was done? How, how have other property owners handled trying to, to clear?
You know, we don't handle the pro- the, the, um, payments through our office, so once we send it through and you all approve it, that goes through, I'm assuming the clerk's office and they pay or.
County assessor.
The county assessors pay, um, so that would be a question to ask them to see how they handle those payments. We just try to recoup the cost of the actual abatement itself. But we don't handle those payments in office.
Other questions from the director? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilman Camp?
Yes, and I'm going to murder your name, but Mr. Skabinski, or.
Would you come?
Could you come back forward for kind of rebuttal and also ask a question? By maybe for you saying, did you recall, do you recall signing those certified letters?
Um, yeah, I, I went to the post office and picked it up, but that was, when I got the letter was probably close to a week after, after the fact, so, but, um, I was up there and, 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 and when they finally go, they, they said they came in on a Monday, uh, I finally found out on Wednesday, but then when I called, got through to somebody and talked to them, well then they, they, uh, because, uh, I had called home and, and she said, well, they, uh, uh, she had a notice from like the city like this and, and she gave me a phone number and so when I called back on Wednesday, they said they already had done it on Tuesday. There was a emergency with all the rains and everything that they thought there was going to be, uh, more running because I'm sure water was running off the building into the barrel and, and like this and we had a lot of rains in the spring and so they was concerned, so they took care of it right away and, and so it was kind of after the fact when I found out, so, but, and besides being a lot of miles away like this to try to come down, but, anyway.
Were, were the addresses that were recited a moment ago, the correct addresses?
Uh, uh, my mail, my mail goes out there, a lot, I reside here in Lincoln most of the time like this, you know, uh, like this, but, uh, my mailing address is out at the farm, yes.
Did you have anything else you wanted to rebut or say in or rebuttal to what we've just heard?
I, 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 I know that I'm guilty because I, I should have been looking what's going on behind the building, but, but, uh, I, all I was hoping is to try to reduce it some like this, to make it more affordable, to try to pay it, but.
Would an installment pay, uh, payment help you, would an installment plan to pay that help you?
I, I, yeah, I, uh, I, I'll, I'll have to, one way or another, I'm going to have to just go to the bank and borrow money to, to try to pay whatever the bill's going to be like this and that's about the only way I can go about it like this because I, uh, with, with being retired, I only get a paycheck once a month and, you know, it's got to last, but, anyway.
Other questions from the council? I, I'm, I'm sorry.
I was going to say, well, when we have time, have the staff come up, the city attorney, I think, just to see what their appeals process would be, if any.
While he's coming forward, I'm, I'm still, so you have a Cleveland address, a farm address, and then this address?
Well, this, yeah, this, years ago, I bought the house for my sister, my.
Okay.
My daughter to go to college and then she ended up going to the military instead, but, and, uh, I had a friend living there for several years, when he moved out, I just left the building empty like this. I had the water and electricity, everything shut off and, and, uh, and, and.
Haven't gotten back to it yet, huh?
Yeah, I, I, I go just occasionally here and there, I stop by to make sure, you know, like I said, nobody broke in or whatever things going on and, and I don't necessarily walk behind the garage to take a look what's going on behind there, but, uh, the neighbor lady, uh, she mows it, it was not a lot of gra- a lot of grass area, but she always took care of it and mowed it for me like this, so I, I was just making sure that if she was, it, everything was okay. It wasn't growing up in a jungle or nothing like that and, but.
This, this was formerly rental property.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank you, that helps me. Patrick, city attorney? Yes, I think Councilman Camp had some.
Well, I guess, uh, two things, one, it looked like, uh, you were looking at some of the file there, but secondly, what would be an appeals process of any for this gentleman? Or can we exclude that from the motion?
Well, I, I'm not sure that he's disputing any, any of the bills or saying that they were out of line. Um, our process, the city's approach here is just to collect the costs that we've already spent. I mean, we went out and cleaned up the property, we incurred that cost, we're asking for reimbursement. As far as what action he can take, and I heard him testify earlier about taking out a loan and my suggestion would be, this is a lien against the property. It, there is no, not going to be any attempt for us to come out and send bill collectors after him or file an court to get a judgment, it's just attached to the property, not to his name. There is interest that runs with this, this lien, but what he could do would be to pay it off in time. And, and I'm sure that by paying it off in time, the interest that the county would assess against the lien is going to be much lower than any loan that he could take out from the bank. So that would probably be his most prudent fiscal maneuver would be to just pay it off in time and, and pay whatever interest that accrues over time, rather than take out a loan from the bank and accrue the interest from the bank and have to pay that back.
You know what the interest rate that would be charged on the lien?
I don't know what the judgment interest rate would be at this point.
I know on delinquent taxes, it's fourteen percent, if I recall correctly.
I, I don't know what that would be. He could call the, uh, the county treasurer's office and they could tell him what they're collecting right now on these liens.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you everyone. Yes.
Can I just correct that, uh, statement that I made earlier? If, if people pay before we bring this process forward, they, we do process the payments in the office. But then, um, these payments go to the county treasurer's office, not the county assessor's office. So I just wanted to correct that for the record.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions from the council? This is a public hearing. Would anyone else like to speak on this item? Seeing none, can we go to our next item?
Next is five C, approving an interlocal cooperation agreement between the city and Lower Platte South NRD for the Dead Man's Run Flood Reduction Project.
Good afternoon, City Council. I'm Miki Esposito, Director of Transportation and Utilities. And what we have before you is, um, an approval of an interlocal cooperation agreement between the city and the Lower Platte South Natural Resources District. This is for the Dead Man's Run Flood Reduction Project. Um, the agreement, the agreement itself sort of establishes roles and responsibilities, expectations between the city and the NRD. It memorializes our relationship and our desire to work together. It also identifies the cost sharing that will occur between the two entities and designates a project manager who happens to be Chris Humphrey. As you know, she's working on the thirty-third and Cornhusker project, so it made a lot of sense that she would also work on this project. Um, because we're coordinating the two. Um, and then again, how financial accounting and records will be kept. So that's what's in the body of the agreement. But as you know, this is a very critical flood reduction project in the area between Forty-Eighth Street and all the way up to Cornhusker. So Paul Zillig, the LPS NRD General Manager, and Ben Higgins are here to talk a little bit about this project, if you have any technical questions. Um, but I wanted to just talk a little bit about the benefits of the project. Um, approximately two hundred and fifty acres will be removed from the flood plain. The project will reduce flood risks for over four hundred and eighty residential or commercial structures. The total project cost is twenty-five point five million and the total cost to the city is seven point seven five million. And again, it'll be coordinated with the Thirty-third and Cornhusker project and sub-area plan. So the cost breakdown, so I just, before I get to that, I want to share all those areas in red, um, that will be removed from the existing flood plain. This is a very significantly important project for the area. Um, I have some detail on the total cost breakdown. And how exactly that twenty-five point five million project cost, um, will be broken up between the two agencies and also the federal corps of engineers. So fifteen million of the project cost is actually eligible for, for federal funding. One point six miles of stream improvements to optimize the channel from Thirty-third to Forty-Ath Street will be paid for out of that fifteen million. We'll construct a concrete flume, which if you don't know what a concrete flume is, we'll get the smart guys up here to talk about what that is. But, um, they'll also relocate an access road at State Fair Park. The federal share on that is ten million. Um, NRD will pay two point five and the city will pay two point five. The second aspect of the project cost is ten point five million and that's all locally funded. And it's gonna be split fifty-fifty with the Lower Platte South and us. Um, that will pay for detention basing, basin at Fleming Fields and also three bridge replacements at Thirty-third, Thirty-eighth, and Forty-eighth. Um, and we'll split that again fifty-fifty. Uh, this is a picture of a concrete flume. So if you have any technical questions, it runs under a railroad in this case. And, um, I again have Paul and Ben here to answer any questions on a technical standpoint.
Councilwoman Lamb?
Thank you. Um, thanks for being here today. So the city's portion of the funding of the seven and a half million will be as part of a stormwater bond, is that correct?
It sure will.
Okay, so that'll be voted on by the people, City of Lincoln?
It absolutely will. Democracy.
Thank you.
Councilman Camp?
I think I got confused, Ms. Esposito, as you went through those different costs and so forth, the cost sharing. Is the total total from all sources twenty-five point five million?
Yes, the total project cost is twenty-five point five, but the project will be paid for first through federal eligibility funding and then a portion of a local share.
So you said the city's share would be the seven point five million?
Total, mm-hmm.
From all those, okay.
From all those sources, right.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
And then what about the, uh, the RTSD, the Railroad Transportation Safety District? How much is its share?
So actually, that'll be dealt with separately in the Thirty-third and Cornhusker project, so completely separate from the Dead Man's Run, uh, project. So they're just, they're distinct projects, but they're being, um, comprehensively approached together because there's both transportation and railroad aspects to the Thirty-third and Cornhusker project. And then Dead Man's Run is again, um, a channel optimization project and flood reduction project.
So I guess the other remaining fifteen million would be between the, uh, Natural Resource District and the federal people, is that right? And how much, and my eyes aren't as good anymore to see.
Yeah, zoom in a little more.
Give me the bottom line, then how much would the, um, NRD pay and how much would the government, federal government pay?
Right, so we've got the federal share, the NRD share, and the city share. Can you see that?
I forgot my regular glasses.
We're really gonna get in there.
So the federal is ten?
Right, right.
Two and a half.
Right.
Well, no, but this, you said the city was, I'm trying to get back to your twenty-five and a half.
Right, so you have to add the below, you have to add the project here. City share, five point two five million.
So the ten million is all that the federal will do?
Yes, yes. The federal is ten million.
Total that the NRD will do then.
So it's the same. It's seven point two five, right?
Seven point five.
So like maybe seven point seven?
Seven point seven five, yes.
Thank you.
Yes, my apologies. Okay?
Yes, thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Any questions?
Councilwoman Gaylord Barrett?
Earlier, when the bond funding, stormwater bond funding was referenced, it made it sound like it was prospective, but this is a bond that's already been issued, correct?
Actually, no. It's, it is prospective. This agreement itself is just to memorialize the relationship. And if we don't secure funding for the project, then we have no obligation for it. But, uh, the bond issue will happen sometime next year.
Okay.
Good question.
Uh, timing, uh, the Thirty-third and, and Cornhusker project, that's still out in the future a bit, isn't it?
It is. It still is out in the future.
But the Dead Man's Run should come up in the next couple of years?
It should, and I would love to invite Ben up here to talk a little bit about schedule.
I would like that.
By the time we're done with that Dead Man's Run, we will be beginning the Thirty-third and Cornhusker project. So here we are.
Hi, Ben Higgins. I'm the Senior Engineer with Watershed Management out of Lincoln Transportation and Utilities. That's still hard to say.
Isn't it weird? And Jeff, I don't think he likes it yet.
Say it again.
Because it's not been talked about.
AKA Public Works and Utilities.
Right.
So our schedule is ahead of the Thirty-third and Cornhusker schedule. I mean, this still has a long timeframe, two or three years, because it's gonna take us about a year to do, do the design, about a year for the right of way, and then we're gonna go to construction. And then after that, we'll go through the letter map revision to actually get these people out of the flood plain. But still, we're gonna be ahead of the Thirty-third and Cornhusker project. But the main thing we're trying to, uh, coordinate with is on Thirty-third Street because that kind of, that's with both projects there. And so that's why we got Chris taking the charge because she was also in Antelope Valley, so has a lot of good experience with these big projects.
Yes, she does.
And she also will coordi-, she's coordinating the Thirty-third and Cornhusker project. So I think this will work out really well.
It will. So we have a little time before we begin, uh, the process of design, right of way, and construction. So we're probably three years, two to three years away from actually breaking ground.
Yeah, yeah, so I, we're thinking breaking ground like maybe late twenty nineteen or twenty twenty. And it probably won't be till, or late twenty twenty-one or late twenty twenty-two that people actually physically are out, or they'll be physically out of the flood plain, but before FEMA considers them out of the flood plain, so.
Councilman Christensen?
Okay, so as we look at this project, my understanding is that the water in the channel flows from the east to the northwest, is that correct?
Correct.
Um, what are the plans, if any, to continue that project east on Dead Man's Run?
Well, so what we wanna do is we wanna get this project underway and get it funded and everything taken care of and started construction. Then we plan to start taking a look further to the east. And hopefully there's some low hanging fruit there, maybe possibly like removing that bridge over there by the Fourth Presbyterian Church off of North Fifty-second. That possibly might lower that flood plain through there. But honestly, we don't plan to really look at it until we get into construction and, and design a little more.
Okay.
Other questions from the council?
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you for your interest.
Uh, still in the public hearing portion, is there anyone in the chamber that would like to add to this, testimony to this agenda item? Okay, that, thank you very much.
If not, we'll go on to item five D, approving an agreement between Lincoln Parks and Rec Foundation and the city establishing the Community Challenge Grant Fund.
I think.
Mr. Chair, I mean, I guess I'd like to offer a motion to amend number three, which takes into account a number of suggestions offered by my colleagues to revise the proposal. And, uh, that was sent to you last week and, and then prepared in print copy for you today.
Motion to amend number three.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilwoman Gaylord Barrett, second by Councilwoman Eskridge. Discussion, Councilwoman Lamb?
So I just, I have a couple of questions under number, item three, the administrative fee. Um, and I understand the one percent. It reads that the foundation may initially assess up to a one percent annual administrative fee for management of the grant fund. This shall be in addition to any usual customary investment asset management fees charged by the foundation's investment advisor or investment company. And I wanted to find out, and this perhaps is a staff question, um, who, at this point, do we, who do we pay those type of funds to? Uh, from the city's funds, since this is coming out of the city, uh, funds, who do we usually pay those to? And then I had another question that perhaps the councilwoman knows the answer to, about whether this would include any, um, is there any kind of a fee for fundraising? Because I think I saw something about a potential fundraising arm. And perhaps Lynn Johnson can, uh, answer that too.
Yep, so tell me, your questions initially for Councilwoman Gaylord Barrett?
If she can answer it, sure.
With the assistance of staff.
I think if, if Lynn Johnson, the Parks Director, and Maggie Stuckey from the Parks Foundation wanna come up and
Yes, please.
Share their background on this, it'd be helpful.
Good afternoon. I'm Maggie Stuckey with the Parks Foundation. Um, so it is not our intent to be, um, investing this with our typical endowment investment company. So I'm reading this and I'm not, um, I am not aware that there will be any additional fees on top of the one percent that we would be charging, which is standard on, on funds that we hold. Um, there would not be an additional fundraising fee. The one percent is all encompassing for that, for that expense. Does that answer your question?
And, and the change that was made with regard to this was initially, there was the opportunity to amend that fee poten-, potentially in the future. But we've taken out that provision and
Right.
And that's all been agreed to by the folks who are here. So it's capped at one percent.
Right.
In perpetuity.
Thank you.
Coming out of the public hearing.
So are we, are we able to strike that part about then the customary investment asset management fees? Or you might understand that's, we're not gonna be paying any of that?
I think that's correct, yes.
So.
Would you like to make that, that change? We can make that change. I can move that we strike. This shall be in addition to any usual and customary investment asset management fees charged by the foundation's investment, investment advisor or investment company. That's in paragraph three on page two.
The second sentence, correct?
The second sentence. Just take that out.
Do we need to make a motion?
Yeah, that would be my, that would be my movement, my motion, yes.
I'd second that.
So we have a motion by Councilwoman Lamb and a second by Councilwoman Raybold to strike the second sentence in section three. Any discussion of that motion? Need to go ahead and vote on that one now? Yes. No discussion of the motion. Teresa, are you prepared to call the roll?
Sure. Raybold?
Yes.
What point, point of, oh, Councilman.
Don't we usually wait till the voting session to do this kind of work? Just what's usual and customary.
Mr. Kerpatrick, would you help us with this?
You can do it either.
Since this is an amendment to the amendment, not actually a vote on the amendment, I think it would be in order to make this small change now.
Thank you. Mr. Councilman, did you?
Well, I was just gonna point out, uh, we talked about the one percent. That's an annual one percent until the funds are, uh, directed.
Any of the conversation about the motion to strike language? Teresa, would you call the roll, please?
This is on the verbal motion to amend. Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylord Barrett?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Other comments? Councilman Camp?
Yes, I, I guess just a point, uh, of clarification. I have a motion amend number four that was prepared by the law. And I'm wondering if rather, and it was, I think it was, uh, noted at the beginning from our city attorney, it'd be adopt a substitute agreement attached here too. Would it be more in order for me to make a motion amend to, on just this, uh, couple of sentences, rather than the whole substitute, so that everyone knows what we're talking about and also from the audience's standpoint?
Mr. Kerpatrick, it sounds like you're saying just.
Either that or, or what would we do because you've got conflicting?
We're going two different directions and two different motions.
Substitute agreements.
Jeff Kerpatrick, City Attorney. Well, I, I think that will depend on what goes on. And I was thinking through as we, as you made this amendment to the amendment. Now, a number of things can happen. This amendment could not be adopted, in which case you're back to the original amendment and your amendment number four could be considered. Um, your amendment, this amendment could be adopted as amended. Uh, and then your amended number four could be adopted, amending this amendment, in which case I would think probably the body would like, wanna come back to paragraph three and take out that sentence, as you've already indicated that you would like to do. Um, but I would suggest that the, probably the most efficient thing to do would be to cross that bridge when we come to it.
Let's see, in the voting session?
In the voting session. I think that will give us the cleanest version of this agreement.
I appreciate that. I'm thinking through the public hearing portion though, to enable, I don't know if anyone's here to testify on this or, but, um, what I have are a couple of changes that I think people ought to be able to, uh, share their testimony on.
Sure. Well, so maybe what would be in order would be for the chair to ask if there's any non-staff, uh, people from the public that would like to testify on the overall agreement in reaction to the idea that, that, uh, Councilman Gaylord Barrett has already expressed. Or if you would like to talk about the changes you would like to make as far as the theoretical changes, then they could react to those. I mean, the, the public is at, at a little bit of a disadvantage with your amendment because it wasn't linked online because it was something that was just, I guess, came through from the weekend.
Well, and we didn't get this one till late Friday afternoon, so it's.
Sure.
You know, I think it might be clearest if I made a motion to amend and just on that section of paragraph six to substitute that language rather than the whole agreement. So that everything's before us and we get testimony on that.
So, just for me to be clear, you're, you're somewhat suggesting that your motion to amend, we set it aside and you just continue, we continue to amend motion amend number three?
He's asking, I think, in essence, that his amendment number four be treated as an amendment to the amendment. Because it really amends amendment three. It deals with that rather than the original underlying agreement. I think that would, I would leave that to the chair.
Well, I think what my colleague, uh, Ms. Gaylord Barrett has come up with is good. It's just these two or three sentences. I'd like to see substituted with some other language, so that can we vote on the package.
It might make sense then to adopt amendment number three. And then your change to the amended agreement would be the topic of the, and the focus of the discussion.
And that'd be before we vote on the whole underlying?
Right.
And that'd be before public hearing?
Hmm, I think I'm gonna ask for, at this moment, right now, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to testify on these agenda items before we proceed with amending them? That would be, you can testify now or, I'm just, this is, show of hands, do you plan to speak? Seeing no hands go up?
I just, I just wanna do it in an orderly fashion so everyone's aware. Okay.
So we're gonna vote on the motion to amend number three and then take up a motion to amend number four?
Right, during the voting session.
During the voting session.
As I think Councilman Christians was pointing out earlier, we haven't yet breached.
No.
Okay.
But how, excuse me, one more second, Mr. Kerpatrick.
Mr.?
So we'll be voting. So we'll be voting on motion to amend number three totally, or before we vote on that, I can make my motion?
His motion to amend number three is on the floor now.
Right.
Right, okay.
But John is free to make another motion to amend on this number, amendment number three, just as we did verbally.
Yeah, I was just thinking similar what Ms. Lamb did.
I don't see why you...
Makes sense.
I mean, we can, we can vote on your next motion to amend, and then...
Well, we understood he wanted to, if we just, we just struck a sentence from motion to amend number three, and you would take your other motions to amend and do likewise to motion number three, is what you were asking, could we do?
Point of order. All this confusion is caused by the fact that we're doing something out of order. We're trying to vote and amend the things outside of the voting session. That's our whole problem right now. I think we should do the, do the, our normal thing, and then come back to this during the voting session.
So we started this with some testimony by Councilwoman Gaylor Baird?
Sure, and I'm, I mean, I, I guess I moved it just to acknowledge that there had been work done in, in reaction to issues raised during the last public hearing. And so some of those, almost all of those changes suggested by Councilwoman Camp were accepted and then distributed last Thursday with opportunities for further discussion. Multiple copies of redlined versions went out to try and make sure every single change was clear and where it came from. So essentially, the, the main purpose though remains the same, and, and that is to try and get some of these projects that have been tough to get across the finish line to get them done. And one of the ways we want to do that is to challenge our community, to partner with the city, and if there are projects that the Parks Foundation is able to inspire community involvement with, that we will get some matching funds to help us take care of some of these parks' assets that we treasure in our community. And so we've, we've got the amended version. There is some additional changes that Councilwoman Camp can discuss if he would like to share before we have more testimony. But the gist of this, and I think what we all agree on, is that we're trying to find a great way to partner with the community to get big things done that will make life better for everyone in Lincoln through our parks.
Thank you. Councilwoman Lamb?
So, am I able to still talk with staff, or are we voting on something?
I don't think we're voting on anything yet. I think we need to go back and talk about the resolution. We never really had it addressed.
We need to vote on motion to amend number three before we do anything else.
Well, there, or you could go back to begin the voting session with 5A, and then go through until you reach 5D, which is the typical...
Would you like me to just withdraw the motion? I, I mean, I was just trying to start the conversation about my motion, and I don't have to make the formal motion now, if that would make this all easier. I can withdraw that motion.
The motion to amend made by Councilwoman Lamb also gets withdrawn, right?
No, it's already been voted on. Can't withdraw it at this point.
Okay, so we normally have someone introduce it, there's lots of testimony, then we take motions. We kind of skipped the first part of that, but...
And this will be the, just to point out, this will be the last item we do in the voting session of the resolutions.
I didn't assume there was a lot of public testimony, given that we've had two public hearings on this already, but happy to take public testimony if there are others here.
So, I'm sorry, Mr. Kerpatrick, so we should vote on the first two items and then come back to the voting session and hash this out?
Well, I think, yeah, you've already called for public testimony on item 5D, which is the agreement. Nobody came forward. I think it's fair to just begin the voting session on resolutions with 5A, and then once you reach 5D, then proceed with the amendments.
Madam Clerk, you know where we are? Okay, let's go to the voting session.
All right, 5A is the lien for the asbestos removal and demolition of the building at 4842 Adam Street, introduced by Gaylor Baird.
Samu?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Gaylor Baird, and a second by Councilwoman Christiansen. Discussion of the resolution about demolition and recouping our cost. Seeing no additional discussion, would you call the roll, please?
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christiansen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next then is item 5B, assessing public health and nuisance abatement costs, introduced by Gaylor Baird.
Samu?
Second.
Have a motion by Councilwoman Gaylor Baird, and a second by Councilwoman Christiansen. Discussion of the report from the Health Department. Hearing none, would you call the roll, please?
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christiansen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Next is 5C, the inter-local cooperation agreement with the Lower Platte South NRD, introduced by Gaylor Baird.
Samu? Second.
Have a motion by Councilwoman Gaylor Baird, and a second by Councilwoman Raybold. Discussion of the agreement. Hearing none, would you please call the roll?
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christiansen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next then is 5D, the agreement with Lincoln Parks and Rec. Foundation, introduced by Gaylor Baird.
Samu?
Second.
Have a motion by Councilwoman Gaylor Baird, and a second by Councilwoman Christiansen.
All right, on the floor then is motion to amend number three.
Okay. I'm going to go with Councilwoman Camp first.
Well, I'm going to move a motion, or a move that we, rather than do a complete new substitute because of what we already voted on in that paragraph three, I'd like to make a motion that in paragraph six, I'm going to get motion number three here. That in par, oh, yeah, it's just basically, we delete toward the end of the last few lines of paragraph six, we delete, starting after 100,000, where it starts saying the entirety of the grant fund may completely be expanded on one project, that we take the rest of paragraph six and substitute the, what you have before you in that blue lining that the city attorney provided, and to repeat it for everyone. The entirety of the grant fund shall be expended on no fewer than three projects, each of which must receive no less than 100,000 from the grant fund. Matching funds from the grant fund for donations shall be made at the discretion of and by the agreement of the foundation and the Parks and Recreation Director, and then donations from private partners and members of the community shall equal or exceed the amount of matching funding from the grant.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilwoman Camp, a second by Councilwoman Lamb. Discussion of the motion to amend.
May I explain further on that? I mean, basically, just two things are created by this. Number one, that instead of giving the discretion to the foundation and Parks and Recreation Director to expend all of the million on one project, they still have the discretion, except I, my language requires that it be spent on no fewer than three projects. So in other words, currently, under motion amend number three, you could take the whole million, put it on one project. The way it works on what I'm proposing, you could still have 800,000 go to one project, but you'd have to do at least two $100,000 funds. And the purpose of that is to really review and, you know, I haven't heard anyone say there's one project, but on the other hand, in discussions with Ms. Gaylor Baird, she kept talking about a project, and I just think it would be better for the city, since this is for refurbishing and repairs, that we, we try to look at a number of projects so it isn't just put on one. The second thing, in addition to requiring three or more projects, is that rather than say, leaving up the discretion to the foundation board and to the Parks and Recreation Director on the, first, the matching amounts, that my language would require that whatever is donated by private partners or members of the community would equal or exceed what comes out of the community grant fund. So whereas now, there is no amount, it could be $1 out of the fund, or excuse me, $1 from the public and all the rest from the, the fund. And again, in adding this language, as I've suggested earlier, this is really just providing a directive to the board, the foundation board, of what we'd like to see. It doesn't preclude under this agreement that if there's some compelling project that they would like to see where they put all the million at one project, of coming forward to us, or if they want to do something other than the 50/50 match. But until that, if that would ever happen, I feel very strongly that we have taken $1 million out of the city's cash reserves, which has never been done before in the history of the city, and that we ought to, we're being very generous in this, we're putting the money with the foundation board, but we're saying if, you know, these are some minimums we'd like to see. And if you have something compelling, come back to us, but otherwise, these would be parameters that you would follow. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Lamb, and then Councilwoman Gaylor Baird?
My questions are now appropriate for Lynn. Thank you.
Gaylor Baird, would you like to speak before the representatives come up?
Okay, thank you, hi.
Good afternoon, Lynn Johnson, for Parkson Recreation.
Thank you very much. I wanted to ask you that, so this agreement reads that the projects selected under this challenge grant will be those that might be provided under the Project 0880 Quality of Life Bond, or in the Capital Improvement Project 1819, as amended, and so forth. So I wanted to ask about the, the projects, because I got an email from you today, because I was inquiring about those projects in particular, and I wanted to verify that you had indicated in your email that each of the projects were over a million each, or thereabouts. Is that correct?
That is correct. There are four projects at this point that we're, that we are actively thinking about utilization of these funds. We've not identified a project or projects moving forward yet. We really need to analyze the projects, we need to think about how we would organize a capital campaign, and we need to then think about the level of financial support that we'd be able to secure, we need to put together a prospect list and sort of work through that process. The four projects that we've been thinking about, and I think I mentioned at the initial public hearing, one of those is replacement of the Air Park Recreation Center. We don't have a master plan yet for that. We anticipate that we should have a master plan completed in early 2019, estimating based on just square footage and existing recreation centers, if it was similar to existing recreation centers, that project is probably in excess of $3 million. Couple of additional projects, the renovation of the Cascade or the Retired Teachers Fountain at Capitol Parkway and 27th Street, we do have a master plan on that. The, the estimated cost coming from the engineer is about $1.5 million for that project. And then we have a couple of other park master plan projects. One of those is the combination of Irvingdale, Stransky, and Rudge Parks. And the cost estimate, the overall cost estimate for that project exceeds $1 million. That, like the Cooper Park project that I'll talk about in just a second, might, most likely could and will be implemented in phases. And then the Cooper Park project, the Cooper Park renovation project, we do have a master plan for that, and the overall cost for the entire project, again, is more than $1 million. And again, that's a project that could be phased. Those are the projects that we've discussed to date. They show up in both the capital improvement program, and they also show up in the tenure facilities plan. Both of those documents are referenced in the agreement. And as, as Councilman, Councilmember Gaylor Baird indicated, the intent of this really is to leverage private support to try to, to get some major capital repair and replacement projects accomplished through public-private partnership. I guess I would ask for some flexibility at this point. As I said, we have not really organized a fundraising effort for any of these projects yet, so the details that the council is discussing at this point, we don't have the answers to those right now. We don't know, for example, can we raise 50% of the funds on any one of these projects? And that's, that will come through more detailed analysis of prospective donors, and really trying to figure out how would we approach moving forward. I'm very confident that we can raise funds on any one of these projects, and on some of these projects, we've already raised some funds at this point, but we have not done the very detailed analysis to figure out how best to leverage these funds. And we do want to make sure that, that we're maximizing the amount that can be accomplished. But the project to me that is most challenging right now, and I don't know whether we can fundraise for this, and it's probably been the project that has been longest standing on the list, is replacement of the Air Park Recreation Center. And I, and I would, Maggie and I haven't had much conversation about this, but that's the project that I'd really like to give some thought to, to figure out, can we, by utilization of these funds, generate significant private investment that we can finally make that, that long overdue project happen?
So, and currently, under 0880, those are part of the CIP that would be funded by a Quality of Life Bond, correct?
Yeah, we had proposed within our capital improvement program, the concept of there being a Quality of Life Bond issue, and we had listed some representative projects within that, that project description. In reality, the way that we would come up with that list is there would be a significant community engagement process, so that we're asking the community to help us identify projects that they think need to be accomplished. From our perspective, that could very well be a combination of some existing facilities that need either rehabilitation or replacement, and perhaps some new recreation opportunities. So the list is representative, it came from our tenure facilities plan.
And that bond would be voted on by the people?
It would be.
Okay. So any reductions as a result of this would reduce the amount of the bond, but the people wouldn't necessarily be voting on this particular, whatever project or projects you chose to, to leverage as a result of this?
That, that's correct.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Camp, I saw your hand up, I'm going to, is anyone else would like to speak, you?
I'd love to. I guess, I just want to address a couple of comments from my colleagues, and then ask our Parks Foundation Director to answer some questions as well. But I do see, we, I think we really are all trying to get to the same point, which is how do we make the most of these dollars? How do we leverage them to the best of our ability to maximize resources for our existing parks' assets? So we're all, we're all really trying to get at the same thing, which is good. With the, you know, the flexibility piece or discretion, I think you mentioned, I mean, part of it is to try and leave it up to the fundraising experts, how do we just accomplish that? So in a minute, I'm going to ask Ms. Stuckey to just speak to how, how having some flexibility rather than a direction of a minimum number of projects helps her do her job as best as she's able to do. And then, just, just to clarify, because I think you suggested that I had an idea in mind of how this would all play out, I don't. I think that, again, this is going to be a private partner response to this challenge, and that's what I'm excited to see, is how, how do people rise to the occasion? Do a bunch of teachers from around the state of Nebraska get excited about revitalizing that fountain here in our capital city? I mean, that could take us well beyond the borders of Lincoln for support. So, you know, don't know how this will all play out, and that's why I want to leave it, I think we, we'd be wise to leave some flexibility in the arrangement, recognizing that any of the funding we receive is more than we have right now for our public infrastructure for parks. And then lastly, there are no surprises here, all of the projects that would be under consideration have already been through public process. They've already been through the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, in some cases for many years, again and again, coming, filtering their way through the process, through the budget process, the CIP. Many of these, these assets, we know, we can go visit them right now, they just, they need help with their maintenance, and we've fallen behind. And this is a way to try and kickstart the renovation, refurbishment, or replacement of valuable park properties that already exist, that we can already touch, feel see today. Maggie, sorry, I wanted to just ask you, if you could speak to how you view, how you believe the challenge grant might be received from the philanthropic community, and whether or not having a minimum number of projects versus a flex, you know, open-ended number will serve the purpose?
Yeah, I would just echo what Lynn was saying about the flexibility. There's also a timing component to this. I know we're interested in getting this money to work as fast as possible, and with Air Park, for example, not having the plans developed yet, you know, that's going to affect how much we're able to raise and how quickly we're able to raise it. Already talking to some of the community groups we're engaged with on Cooper Park, for example, there is so much excitement that there is the potential that we could really make some big strides in that park. The Irving Stransky Rudge Group as well is, is also already on the ground raising funds. So this would be a huge jumpstart or re-engagement for those groups to really continue the process. So I, like Lynn, I have no doubt that we have support for these projects, and this money would just allow us to get there so much quicker, and like you said, get back to where those facilities should be.
Additional comments, Councilwoman?
No, good, thank you.
Councilwoman Camp?
Yes, thank you. Appreciate both of you being here. When you do the fundraising, and again, basically, I'm agreeing with everything that Ms. Gaylor Baird said, except I'd like to have the two requirements that the board... except I'd like to have the two requirements that the board and Mr. Johnson consider that they have to use at least three projects, but it still give you $800,000 for one. And as you went through these, you know, that's a significant amount. And so, of course, a million, you know, $200,000 more is good, but, or better, but isn't $800,000, if you wanted to do that on one project, significant in what you're looking at in the variety of parks projects and so forth? You had several that were, you said, were slightly over a million or a million and a half. And so if you had a 50-50 match, any of those three could be done?
Absolutely. The thing that I would offer for the council's consideration is when we establish a floor for the match, we're also, I think we're also establishing a ceiling, because I think you create that expectation. If we say that it's a one-for-one match, I think people are going to expect that. We've certainly done better than that on most of our projects, and in fact, all of our fundraising campaigns. I don't know that I can guarantee that on these projects, because these are different projects than we've done before. Particularly, the Cascade Fountain Project and the Air Park Recreation Center Project are going to be challenging projects. Again, I guess I would ask for some flexibility at this point to give us time to really think through what those capital campaigns look like, where the prospective donors might be. And we're happy to come back and report to the council progress that we make on those projects, or make on the planning of those projects. And the foundation has a demonstrated track record of really maximizing the private, the public dollars in these capital campaigns. So, again, I guess I continue to ask for flexibility at this point and kind of, I guess, to level the trust in the prior good work that's been done by the foundation, the department.
I think both are given under my proposed agreement. It's just, I'm not saying a full million on one project, and I'm saying it would at least exceed, equal or exceed what the challenge grant would be. Now, since you haven't formulated these, what if we just wait and we keep the $1 million in the city treasury, and then you bring the projects to us? I mean, I'm giving, you know, under my proposal, it gives you tremendous flexibility. Again, we haven't given a million dollars out before from the cash reserves and put full discretion in you, Mr. Johnson, and the board, the foundation board. And I'm more than willing to do that. I just think having a little bit of a threshold here to assist in that would be beneficial to the city and the citizens and taking this taxpayer money that was in our reserve and giving you, I mean, pretty much unilateral flexibility with those two minor directives.
I'll just repeat my sort of sentiment with the kind of feeling behind this and sort of how private fundraising works, is that you really have to inspire generosity, not demand it, of our private partners. And this is a vehicle for incentivizing and inspiring private giving for things that are considered public responsibilities that have public benefit. These are the people's parks. So, you know, we've added additional reporting. We've taken away the potential to amend the fee. I say we let them go, get this done, and make their job as easy as possible.
I have a couple of questions, and Councilman Eskridge does. Thank you both for coming and helping us work through this. You listed four projects, and each one of those has a cost over $1 million. Councilman Camp, and I understand what he's saying, it would be, and I have a little concern about it all being spent in one part of the city and some group or community being left out. But can you, how were these four projects selected? And can you do any of these with the restrictions on doing three projects? Would that prevent any of these three projects from being completed?
I can begin by answering the question about how the projects were identified. We go, every two years, we go through a process of reviewing existing facilities and identifying facilities that are in need of major either rehabilitation or repairs, so.
Just as long.
Yep, and we have worked through that process. These, each of these projects have been within that plan for a number of years at this point. The question about the ability to utilize these funds, I think the answer is absolutely yes. The project that gets me puzzled right now, and to be perfectly honest, is the Air Park Recreation Center project. That project has been long overdue. And that project, if we could figure out a way to make it happen, would certainly be a priority for me at this point. The other projects are certainly priorities, and there is interest in those projects. And we are working through the process with those community partners. I'm figuring out how to put those projects together. So I don't know that I've answered the question very well, but I know that we can take this money and make good things happen, I guess.
Yeah, my question wasn't, I'm sorry to belabor this, but if we approve or vote yes on Councilman Camp's recommendations that you have to do three projects, would that disadvantage this list of projects?
Only perhaps the Air Park Recreation Center project. It's the project on the list that is large enough that it could utilize all of the funds potentially, if we were successful enough to get matching private sponsors.
Go with Councilman.
Well, I guess I would just, oh, sorry.
Okay, all right. I want to follow up with what Benny was suggesting here, just with some of the thoughts I had about the four different projects. Obviously, Air Park Rec Center is near and dear to me, but take that off the table. I'm really interested in Irvingdale and Cooper Park. And both of those are, you indicated, some little bit over $1 million, is that right?
Yeah.
And Cooper Park, the oldest park in our city. You know, 150 years ago, when our city was platted, there was Cooper Park. Getting that up to speed, I think, is a really important thing for our community to do. Irvingdale Park, the changes that are envisioned there, including the removal of the bomb shelter, is a good thing. So, yeah, I mean, and those are two that would take up the whole amount of money if you had a 50-50 match, presumably. You need, one, and you need flexibility to be able to do what you got to do, figure out who your donor base is, and that's kind of my question for you. Ms. Stuckey, is, in doing this work, you have, there's a science. You got to figure out who your givers are and if this is something, whatever this is, that they would support and that you do have the ability to raise the funds before you designate a project. Could you talk just a little bit about that?
Yeah, there's definitely engaged community groups with all of these projects. I'll speak to Irving. We have neighborhood associations, I think five different neighborhoods that touch that expanse of the park. They're all interested in being part of it, working with the Irving Middle School on how we could utilize that park better for their classrooms. We've been talking to them about it. We have a lot of adjacent neighbors who are interested, people who grew up going to that pool, who want to see it continue. So for Irving, for example, our list is broad and long and big. And we have started raising some money, as Lynn said. We've already been successful in some piecemeal things. I'd like to support the path. I'd like to do this. The energy we are already seeing there tells me that showing dollars on the table in this way would be a huge asset. So it's definitely taking a broad look at each of these projects. Who are the stakeholders, current, past, future, and how can we piece it together? So as Lynn said, we have not gotten to that point for these projects yet. Air Park, again, is kind of the big elephant in the room. We're trying to figure out how to make that happen. So that would be the process that would start tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Gaylor Baird?
I guess, again, just with the flexibility, if, let's say, you divided it three ways and did a little over $300,000 for three different projects, you might not actually be able to raise enough money from the private sector to get any of them done. So the idea is to help you have the flexibility to try and make the calculation of what projects can we get completed utilizing these dollars and raising money from the private sector. And it might be that you can get one, it might be that you can get two, it might be that you get four. We just don't know. And having some flexibility to make that call in real time in relationship with donors and the community seems to me to make sense. And no matter how much you raise, and I don't think it'll just be a dollar, will really help our system, our park system.
Councilman Camp?
Ms. Stuckey, I appreciate the work you're doing and so forth. You know, it's until two and a half months ago, you didn't know you had any money. And so you've been on the course of raising money for BikePass and everything in Irvingdale, as an example.
Correct.
Well before that. So now you've got an opportunity here, and under my amount, or what I'm proposing, along with what Ms. Gaylor Baird has put in there before, you at least get $100,000 for each project. You might get several here. So isn't this giving you a lot more flexibility? I mean, $1 million to use on three projects? You had none of that before, two and a half months ago.
This certainly is going to help all of these projects, however it is divided. What I would offer is that we are early in the process on all of these projects, that knowing exactly what we're going to need right now to bridge the gap, I just don't know what that is. And so I do appreciate the opportunity to take a look at our donor base, take a look at our community partners, and do the math to maximize this fund. Again, I just don't, like Lynn said, I just don't have the answers of how that division makes the most sense, really, to use this money to its best potential.
Well, in addition to these four that Mr. Johnson identified for us, the big mega projects, the million-dollar ones, with undoubtedly, there are many, many more that are in the $100,000, $200,000 range. So you could do one of these big ones, you know, you get 800 million, or 800,000. That'd do any of the three, other than Air Park. And you'd still have, be able to do two other smaller ones. Is that not fair?
That would be true. I mean, the list is certainly longer than the four. Those are the four that we've identified, that community support exists. The momentum is there, and we really think this is a great opportunity to move them along, just because of the projects they are.
And I think, you know, when we voted on this in the budget, the idea was a challenge fund, that it wasn't limited to one. I mean, I looked at it as a new tool
Right.
to encourage a lot of other donors in a lot of projects. And here, releasing, my approach would be three. Would you, as an alternative, be acceptable to us just keeping the money? And you could say to these people, the donors, potential donors and all that, the city has a million dollars there for challenge grants, it's still there. But then you would come to us, and if you wanted just one, then you need to pull that together and convince us. I just think what this, without my amendments, is just giving you total discretion to do what you want to do with it. Total, total discretion. And this is sacred money coming out of our cash reserves. And again, that's not to imply you won't, but any loan officer is going to require you to sign over your fifth generation and so forth. It's.
I think we're kind of talking in circles here now. I know Councilman Christiansen had something to.
It's pretty clear to me that John and Learyn are not going to agree. And I suspect that through all this discussion, nobody's going to be persuaded up here. So I'm going to call the question on John's amendment to motion to amend number three.
Okay. Do we need a second on the call to question, or we just immediately go to the vote? Thank you both.
No. Schob?
No.
Camp?
Yes.
Christiansen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
No.
Gaylor Baird?
No.
Lamb?
I would just like to say that I think this gives the opportunity to spread the money out throughout all of Lincoln instead of securing it in one location. I'm going to vote yes.
Motion lost, three to four.
So now we're back to the.
The main motion to amend number three.
Can I inquire, Mr. Chair? Thank you. I'm just wanting to make sure that because we circled back to this, that the, my motion to strike that was passed is now part of motion to amend number three.
Correct.
Thank you.
So we're on motion to amend number three. We have a motion in second on that. I assume there's no additional discussion. We've kind of talked this to death. Would you please call the roll?
Can I just, I just, I want to thank the Parks Foundation for their partnership, because this is taking on additional responsibility to try and move these projects along that maybe they weren't, didn't have plans to jump on right away. So appreciate their efforts.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Camp?
No.
Christiansen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
No.
Motion carried, five to two. Now we vote on the main motion.
You have to say discussion. I think, I think we've already discussed. Please call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Camp?
No.
Christiansen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
No.
Motion carried, five to two.
Next, then, our public hearing ordinance's second reading. Item 6A, amending the, actually, I'll call 6A, B, and C together, as they're all related. They're all amending pay schedules for employee groups by adjusting the pay ranges for classifications E, W, and X, all to be effective August 23, 2018.
Good afternoon, Council Doug McDaniel, Human Resources. This, these three ordinances adjust the cost of living increases for the three pay groups mentioned, E, W, and X. These are classified but unrepresented personnel in the city at 2.5% cost of living increase.
Questions, Mr. McDaniel? Thank you very much. Is this a public hearing? Is anyone in the audience who would like to testify on this? Seeing no one, Mr. McDaniel, thank you very much.
All right, that concludes our public hearing. We can move into the voting session.
I would like to do that.
All right, we'll go on to ordinance's third reading. Item 7A is Change of Zone 18028, application of David Meisenger for a change from B3 to H2 at North 44th and Q Streets, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Eskridge, second by Councilman Christiansen. Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Schob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christiansen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Item 7B is Development and Conditional Zoning Agreement with David Meisenger to allow the construction of a mini warehouse at North 44th and Q Street, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Eskridge, second by Councilman Christiansen. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Schob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christiansen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Item 7C, Comp Plan Conformance 18009, declaring approximately 13,163 square feet of the Missouri Pacific Trail as surplus, generally located at, between South 95th and 97th on the north side of A Street, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Eskridge, second by Councilman Christiansen. Discussion of 7C? Would you call the roll, please?
Schob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christiansen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Item 7D, Annexation 18001, annexing approximately 103.07 acres at South 93rd and A, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Eskridge and a second by Councilman Christiansen. Any discussion of the motion? Call the roll, please.
Raybold?
She's not.
Yeah, didn't vote for her, yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christiansen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
7E is Change of Zone 18006. This is the application of Heritage Lakes for a change from AG to R3 at South 93rd and A, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Eskridge, second by Councilman Christiansen. Discussion? Would you call the roll, please?
Schob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christiansen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Would you call the roll, please?
Showb?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christiansen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Item 6F is the conditional annexation and zoning agreement for residential development northwest of the intersection of 98th and A Street, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Eskridge, second by Christiansen. Discussion?
Yes, was it said it was 6F or 7F?
7F.
Yeah, it should be 7F.
Oh, I misunderstood. Thank you.
Discussion of 7F.
Item 7G, appeal of Chris Kidwell of Planning Commission's approval of special permit 18021, application of Heritage Lakes to develop a community unit plan consisting of 290 residential dwelling units on approximately 96.18 acres with requested waivers on property located at South 93rd and A Street, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Eskridge, second by Christiansen. Councilman Eskridge?
Thank you. This is the controversial piece of this, and appreciated Mr. Kidwell's invitation to see this, you know, beautiful property that exists out there, and the, kind of the dream that he has for the property is to have a retirement facility that looks like a really nice place. The challenge is that it's not, it's not fully hatched, it's not something that's being proposed with this development, the other developments. And that, that piece of things hasn't gone to the Planning Commission yet. And so, it's, it's an important process issue that, that I don't think we should, should approve the appeal for something that has not gone through that, that process that's really important for things. So, so mainly for that reason, that's, that's, that's my primary reason for, for not approving the appeal. Connectivity is, that is envisioned here is important, but when, when this development comes forward, that will be the time to challenge the connectivity on, to see if there is the necessity for a road on Mr. Kidwell's property or not, not at this point. So, for that reason, I'm opposing the appeal.
Councilman, Christiansen was next, then Councilman Lamb.
So, after having spoken with Mr. Kidwell, it's pretty clear that his vision for the use of his property will never include a road that goes through there.
Right.
He will not do it. And he's actually, through this appeal, trying to spare the developer on the property we're talking about of building a road that ends in a, in a dead end. That, he's trying to do a service to the people who are developing this property. It is within our power, as our attorney general, attorney told, not attorney general, our attorney told us last week, that we can go ahead and deal with this. And I think we should, and I'm going to support this because two factors. One, Mr. Kidwell is doing this at this time to be a good neighbor. And he's also made it clear that he is not going to ever develop his property in a manner that will include a road going through there, so.
Councilwoman Lamb?
Yes, I just wanted to echo what both these gentlemen said, because I realize that this is a, this is a difficult situation, but I do think that bringing it forward on the back end doesn't really give the best use of the property for the development that's in front of us that we just approved, because if it is going to end up in a dead end, and I, I mean, there are a lot of places around town where that happens, and it's not appealing, and it doesn't sound like that's, that he's going to consider a road for the vision and the dream he has. Although, I'm not absolutely certain if we approve the appeal, are we approving the waiver? That's what I'm wanting to know. Like, is it, do we go forward with, I'm wanting to make sure that I know what a yes vote and a no vote means, because these get a little confusing.
David Carey, Director of the Planning Department. Mr. Kirkpatrick and I were just discussing that. I think we do want to think through this before we take the vote. My understanding is that the appeal was given in order to process this forward. My understanding is that the vote would be on the waiver that's been requested, so either voting for or against the waiver, but I'm open to a different consideration. Mr. Henderson's here as well. Is that how you understand it?
Steve Henderson with the Planning Department. So, yes, the Planning Commission approval of the special permit has, in essence, been voided, and it's now a recommendation. So, you still need to approve the special permit. Mr. Houston offered a motion to amend, and I'm sorry if we didn't make this clear before time. His motion to amend was to actually delete the road connection that was already part of their application. So, our recommendation is to approve the special permit, that's what's in front of you, but to not approve the motion to amend offered by Mr. Houston. Mr. Houston's motion to amend would delete the street connection and instead make it a cul-de-sac. That's why they had to have the unusual aspect of appealing their own approval, which they sought, because they wanted to reverse something that they already had in their plan. The plan that was approved by the Planning Commission showed the street connection going through. That was what was part of the original plan, that was what was reviewed by Planning Commission and staff, and so, that was approved. After it was approved, Mr. Kidwell came forward and said, you know what, I really don't want that street connection, so they appealed their own approval. But you still need to approve the special permit, it's just without the motion to amend, would be our recommendation. Mr. Houston's recommending you approve it with his motion to amend.
So, the action that you would be taking today would be, I believe, the motion, the motion that's on the floor is to approve-
Approve the special permit.
The special permit. So, clarity could be brought to it by stating in the record that it's to approve the special permit as, as acted on by the Planning Commission without the requested waiver.
But it says with the requested waivers in our motion.
Correct. There were other requested waivers that were reviewed by staff, reviewed by Planning Commission, and those were approved. This is a new waiver that was not requested previously, that they're asking you to include by a motion to amend. And that was one of the reasons we had recommended-
Where is that motion to amend?
I have a copy of it, and I believe it was also included in your packets.
Okay, so, we need to move that, to act on it, before we vote on this.
If, if you want to follow Planning's recommendation, you vote on it as is without the motion to amend.
Right. I move the motion to amend.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Christiansen-
That makes it clear what we're doing.
And a second by Councilwoman Lamb. To, now, we're going to discuss the motion to amend.
So, the motion to amend basically says that we're going to have a cul-de-sac instead of a dead-end road. That's what it says.
Councilwoman Gaylor Baird, do you need a moment?
I mean, I'm just uncomfortable with this process, and to echo Councilman Eskridge's comments, taking this kind of action without having this go through the Planning Commission will surely lead to other requests like this that don't go through Planning Commission that come to us solely, and I'm not comfortable with setting that precedent. As unfortunate as the situation is, it's not ideal. It could, in a future time, be made into a cul-de-sac, at which point, when Mr. Kidwell's plan for his property is being brought forward, we can make a decision in real time as to whether or not to close that road or continue it, and I would be more comfortable making that decision at that time.
Hi, Councilman Camp?
Through the proper public process.
Councilman Camp, and Mr. Carey, I have a question for you, one he-
Well, I would say I'm a strong believer in process, and so, I do appreciate what my colleagues are saying. However, we've got a situation of a proposed development, and to hamstring the current major development before us and then impose on Mr. Kidwell a secondary project that we're not sure when it would come up, it really defeats the purpose here. And I appreciate Mr. Houston, when he came through and presented this to us on the appeal and so forth, saying, you know, we'd like not to have those barricades. And unfortunately, as Ms. Lamb said, there are a number of them around town. And I think if, if you did go out and look at that land, you'll see with the pond and everything, and with Mr. Kidwell's idea of a retirement village, it makes so much sense. And you've got so many obstacles otherwise with the LAS power lines, the LAS substation. So, this puts certainty in it. It's a very microscopic part of the whole project that Mr. Kidwell would bring before Planning Commission, but it does provide certainty that is really common sense. There, there's just not going to be a connecting parcel there. I'd support the motion to amend.
Other questions before I ask? Mr. Carey, would you help me understand this a little better? So, the motion to amend permanently locks this into a cul-de-sac?
The way, yes. So, what the, what the motion to amend is to basically change the layout of the streets compared to what went through the process up to this point, so it would lock in that there would not be a street connection. That's the best way to think of this.
And the, what was proved through the Planning Commission was to build it as if you were going to build a street and just barricade the end of it-
Correct.
-and wait for the next one to go. So, it's kind of a modified cul-de-sac.
I wouldn't call it a cul-de-sac.
Okay. Modified dead-end street.
Yes.
So, that's what we're, if we deny the waiver, the process can, the project can go forward, but they just have to make arrangements to connect a street that may or may not be there in the future.
Correct. So, so really, what I mean, so, there's the motion to amend that is on, up for discussion and then vote now, vote that up and down, but then the main motion will be still to approve the special permit so that the whole project can move forward. That's the two steps that we're at right now.
Other questions from the council? Mr. Carey, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else, we're ready to go? I think we're ready to vote, aren't we? We're voting on the motion to amend now.
And to be clear, a yes vote means cul-de-sac, a no vote means dead end.
Okay. Tracy, would you call the roll?
Raybold?
I'm sorry, she's not going to answer.
Showb?
No.
Camp?
Yes.
Christiansen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
No.
Gaylor Baird?
No.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion fails three to four, three to three.
Three, three.
And goes on next week's agenda.
Wait, this is a motion to amend, does it, they go on to next week's agenda? Mr. Kirkpatrick, would you help us? We still have another motion here to deal with.
Yes, City Attorney Jeff Kirkpatrick. Because it's an amendment, not the, the motion.
Motion.
It, the amendment fails three to three, now, you vote on the underlying ordinance.
Ordinance.
If it fails, if it has the same vote, three to three, then it goes on the agenda for the next meeting.
Okay.
If it could always pass, and then you have a four-two vote, obviously.
No, this is a resolution, though, that we're voting on, it's not an ordinance.
Yes, it's just in the ordinance section of your agenda.
We vote on it in two weeks.
Vote in two weeks.
Say that again? Oh, we are, we're-
It'll be next week.
If this, if this goes to a three-three tie, then we vote on it again-
On the 19th.
On the 19th.
And this is the dead-end version, this ends up-
Mm-hmm.
Right. Any other discussion of this motion? Do you need a little, Councilman Camp?
So, now, we're on the main motion, so a yes vote would-
Is the dead-end version.
Well, no.
It's to approve the special permit as acted by the Planning Commission without approving the new waiver.
Make sure it's okay for me to speak.
Yeah. Please. Mr. Carey, please speak.
Thank you. So, the staff suggests that you approve the overall special permit at this point, because it's the rest of the package that has been agreed to. So, you, you just, the motion to amend failed on the three-three vote, but I would recommend that you vote this up so that the project can move forward.
So, my question is this. If this gets passed, is there a way where Mr. Kidwell can go back through the Planning Commission, bring this back to us, and change it so there is not a dead-end street?
Or Mr. Houston could-
Yes, there is, there certainly is that opportunity. There, there will always be that opportunity to kind of bring it back through the-
Until they actually build the dead-end street.
Until they actually build it. And then even, it, yeah, really, the, the next step would be if that, if the neighboring property developed and then the dead-end street was built, that starts to obviously solidify what the layout will be, but there still is the opportunity for Mr. Kidwell to go back to the process.
I have a question for our attorney.
Mr. Kirkpatrick, will you yield for a question?
Okay, my question is this. Is it appropriate at this time to ask Mr. Houston what his preference would be? I mean, would it be okay with him to go through the process, take it through the Planning Commission, and bring it back to us for the waiver?
We're kind of in, not in the public testimony.
Right, we're not.
That's the question.
Yeah.
Because it's one thing to ask staff questions-
That's why I'm asking you.
It's another thing to ask a, I would say that in the last four years, I don't recall us ever doing that, asking a, a private party a question during the voting session.
Yep.
I would say that that would be, if the chair is comfortable setting that precedent, that's certainly within the power of this body.
I'm less comfortable changing precedent.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion, we open public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to open public hearing. That would allow other people to testify while we're in the voting session. Discussion of the motion to open public hearing? Would you call the roll, please?
Raybold? Oh, darn, she's on. Showb?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christiansen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
Would anyone in the audience like to testify on this item?
Did you know the question I'm going to ask you, right?
I, I do.
Okay.
Tom Houston, 2 through 3, South 13th, Suite 1900.
Thank you both.
The, the question is what my preference would be. I think my preference would be is to defer the vote on this item for two weeks to allow the motion to amend to be heard with full council present. I think that'd be my first preference. It was important for my client, for the coalition, to have the annexation, the annexation agreement and the changes on approved today, which the council did.